Planning Commission, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, meeting to order. Roll call, please, Mrs. Moore.
Mr. Hamilton?
Here.
Mr. Cale?
Here.
Mr. Tarly?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Here.
Mr. Granger?
Here.
Mr. Sokolowski? Ms. Lebel?
Here.
Because it is the first meeting of the new year, we're going to have the election of our officers first. I'll ask if there is a recommendation for a chair.
I would move for Mr. Boswell to be chair of the Planning Commission.
I would second that.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Cale?
Aye.
Mr. Tarly?
Aye.
Mr. Boswell?
Aye.
Mr. Granger?
Aye.
Ms. Lebel?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Boswell, the meeting's all yours.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. We now need a nomination for first vice chair, second vice chair, and clerk.
I move that Mr. Tarly be named first vice chair, Mr. Granger be named second vice chair, and Mrs. Moore be named clerk.
Second.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Cale?
Aye.
Mr. Tarly?
Aye.
Mr. Boswell?
Aye.
Mr. Granger?
Aye.
Ms. Lebel?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Our first agenda item is the approval of minutes. We have regular meeting minutes from November sixteenth of last year and regular meeting minutes from December fourteenth of last year. There have been a few minor edits made since the minutes were posted online on Friday. Does anyone have any other edits to bring up? Okay, then there's their motion to approve the meeting minutes of November sixteen and December fourteen, twenty twenty-two, as submitted. So moved. Second.
Second.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Cale?
Abstain.
From both?
Abstain. On November. November. Was it one motion, though?
November and December.
You can abstain as to the one and aye as to.
Okay, abstain for November, aye for December.
Mr. Tarly?
Aye.
Mr. Boswell?
Aye.
Mr. Granger?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Our next agenda item is an open forum. This is an opportunity for anyone to come and address the commission about any matter that is not on today's agenda. I know we have folks who are here to speak about some of the agenda items, but if there's anything else on your mind, now is the time to do that. And I see everyone's going to wait until the designated times on the specific applications, so we'll close that open forum. We don't have consent agenda items today, so we'll move right to the public hearings. Our first is the CIP, and this is going to be a little bit strange, but this is another opportunity for anyone to come and address the commission on anything that you think should be included in the five-year capital improvement program. We will be having a work session next week on this, and we always value input from the public about matters that should go into the capital improvement program. So this is that opportunity, and I'm not seeing anyone asking to come forward to speak on that, so we'll close that and move to SPR twenty-two dash zero zero seven. Ms. Griffin, this is yours.
Yes, good afternoon, Chairman Boswell and all members of the Planning Commission. We have several public hearings, so we will go ahead and get started. The first is a request of the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation for approval of a site plan for the Collin G. and Nancy N. Campbell Archaeology Center at four hundred South Nassau Street. The reason why this is coming before use because this is associated with a special use permit, and our ordinance requires any site plan associated with a special use permit to come before the Planning Commission and City Council with the public hearing. And just to give you an overview, on November the tenth of twenty twenty-one, City Council approved PCR twenty-one dash zero one five. This was a rezoning of the property from Colonial Williamsburg Historic Area CW to museum support our MS District. At that time, the council also approved PCR twenty-one dash zero one six. This was a special use permit for the net removal of fifty-four parking spaces in the entire downtown area to accommodate the construction of the archaeological center. July twenty-sixth of last year, the ARB approved the design of the center. November twenty-two, staff approved the site plan, and then December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, the Site Plan Review Committee met to discuss the plans. This is a rendering of the center from the southwest along Nassau Street. Again, this is just the zoning ordinance section that requires us to have this public hearing today. This is the front elevation of the archaeological center that was approved by the ARB, and staff is recommending approval of this site plan because it is in keeping with the rezoning. It's also in keeping with the special use permit, and all of the applicable staff have reviewed this particular site plan that includes the planning office, code enforcement, fire, police, and the city engineer. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Questions from Ms. Griffin about this site plan? Okay, hearing none. I'll ask if anyone from CW, I see some of our friends from CW, would anyone like to come and address the commission? No need to, if you don't have anything specific to add? Okay, thank you. Would anyone, any members of the public, like to address the commission on this particular site plan approval? Okay, this is an exciting project. I'm really happy to see it moving forward. Is there a motion to approve SPR twenty-two dash zero zero seven as submitted unless there's discussion from the commissioners? A discussion or a motion?
Can I so move that motion? Or so moved? Second.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Cale?
Aye.
Mr. Tarly?
Aye.
Mr. Boswell?
Aye.
Mr. Granger?
Aye.
Mr. Sokolowski?
Aye.
Ms. Lebel?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Moving on to PCR twenty-two dash zero one nine. Ms. Griffin, again.
Yes, this is a special use permit provided by Riverside Health Systems to request a special use permit to encroach on slopes in excess of thirty percent for the future development of townhomes on parcel B seven located in the Quarter Path Master Plan Development. First thing I wanted to do today is to go over the actual master plan, and here in blue, you can see the upcoming developments. In yellow, you have what is now under construction in Quarter Path, and then the red shows the completion. The hospital has been complete, also Village Green North and the attain apartments. Before you today is the curb or what you see in the blue, they're requesting a special use permit in order to encroach on these slopes. You also have under construction the RLC Center. This is age restricted, and you also have under construction the Riverside Medical Office Building. In our office at this time, we have the Peninsula Dermatologist Site Plan, and we also have the Greenwood Village Site Plan, which you see in blue. Greenwood Village will come before you in your February meeting for a public hearing, and also the Peninsula Dermatologist will be on your consent agenda at your next meeting. Again, today, we're concentrating on the curb or which you'll see there in the blue. The encroachment on the slopes will be up to point five five acres. This includes point twenty-four acres of natural slopes and point thirty-one acres of man-made slopes. This is an eighty-six unit townhouse development. Property specifics, this property is around fifteen point six acres, and five point five acres are within the resource protection area. Of course, there are no development can take place in the RPA. The slope legend here, you can see the limits of the man-made steep slope impacts of thirty percent or greater of the dark red, and then the limits of the man-made slopes are in the striped white. Thought it was important to show the future build out here. First, this was approved with proffers that allow the construction of no more than eight hundred and ninety-five residential units. The additional eighty-six units proposed for parcel B seven will leave around a hundred and forty-seven more units available for construction in this particular development. And here is the breakdown for multifamily rental, age-targeted, multifamily for sale, fee simple, three-story townhouses, and fee simple two-story townhouses. Anytime that you're looking at a special use permit, it is for the granting of uses that, if not specifically regulated, can have an undue impact or be incompatible with other uses of land within or adjacent to a given zoning district. You can put standards and controls and limitations and performance criteria on the special use permit. So first, let's go over all of the criteria that are required in order for the Planning Commission to provide approval for this particular special use permit. First, it must be in harmony with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan calls for this area to be economic development. This is the land use designation. The entire Quarter Path development is within an economic development land use designation. This particular project does fit within that designation. The zoning district, the zoning ordinance requires that the particular use be in harmony with the intent of the underlying zoning district. This zoning district is the economic development zoning district with the conditions that I talked about before, the around eight hundred units that can be provided, and also commercial components. The character of the adjacent properties, the zoning ordinance requires that all of this particular unit is in character of adjacent properties and the surrounding neighborhoods and with existing and proposed development. Of course, this is a master plan project that was planned approximately eleven to twelve years ago, and this is just moving forward with this particular development. Additional criteria are services. The zoning ordinance requires that any project within that's asking for a special use permit to have adequate services such as public roads, drainage, and fire protection. We know that that's already something that happens in this particular area. Design, the proposed use shall be designed, sighted, and landscaped so that the use will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development of adjacent properties or surrounding properties. This is not within the ARB district. However, the site plan will make sure that the property is property landscaped, that is all in the zoning district, and the zoning ordinance requires certain parking requirements, landscaping requirements, and drainage requirements. And then the impact, the proposed use shall not result in the destruction, loss, or damage of any feature determined to be of significant ecological, scenic, or historical importance. And we know that it will not have any impact on the historical importance, but we do want to look at the significant, if it will have a significant ecological impact. And that is when you get into additional requirements for waivers. And the zoning ordinance requires, one, that it must alleviate negative environmental impacts, no encroachment into a RPA area is permitted. Mitigation plan, the applicant must provide a mitigation plan to reduce the downstream erosion and to prevent any increase in water pollution for the project, and then this project must also regulate stormwater runoff. Any project that comes to the city must go through a rigorous review by the planning staff and also the engineering staff, and this is how we regulate the stormwater runoff for the project. Staff analysis, staff is suggesting that prior to council's consideration, the city's stormwater manager, program administrator, review and submit a recommendation on the mitigation plan. This is in keeping with previous slope review that was done by this board. The Greenwood Village also required the same review by our stormwater manager. Environmental measures, ENS, or what we call erosion and sediment control measures, will take place, and then the review process, as I said before, this site plan is currently under review by city staff. And we did get a citizen concern. The, there were, it was kind of lumped into three different areas, and I'll go over them very quickly. One was the construction of a pool. The letter said the current pool services, I will say, the current pool services all development in Quarter Path, and the concern was that the pool was supposed to be built on this particular property. And the question was, if the pool cannot be built because of the slopes, then how would these residential units be built because of the slopes? I did want to point out that the pool was never supposed to be built on this property in particular. It was supposed to be built over by the Greenwood Village area, and, but right now, the pool is actually at parcel B eleven, and this is the approved subdivision plat. And as you can see, parcel B eleven, there is from Prospect Street and off of North Ridge Street, and that is where the pool is actually located. Open space, open space is required and approved by the planning department per the zoning ordinance, and the master plan itself must have at least twenty percent open space landscaped for the entire Quarter Path development, and then each site plan requires additional open space based on if it's a townhouse or if it's multifamily. So twenty percent overall for Quarter Path, and then each individual development has to have a percentage of open space also. So open space has been afforded in each of the developments that come forward to the Planning Commission for Quarter Path. There was also a question about rental units and communication with developers. Of course, we cannot answer those questions here, the planning staff cannot, and the Planning Commission cannot. However, we have forwarded the letter on to the developer. This just gives you an overview of the aerial of the subdivision. Again, we're talking about parcel B seven, and as you can see, the smaller on the side is parcel B eleven where the pool is located. Parcel B twelve is the Greenwood Village that I told you was coming to you soon, and then parcel B eight is the dermatology peninsula dermatology that will be coming to you at your February meeting. So staff is recommending approval of the special use permit, the request by Riverside Health Systems. We also are recommending, as we said before, that the, our stormwater manager review the plan before it goes, before this special use permit goes before the city council. Is there any questions? That was a lot. I'm happy to answer them for you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Griffin, and thank you also for having the folks from Quarter Path come in last fall and help kind of contextualize this and within that ten-year, within that ten-year history that we've been, we've been working with us. Are there questions for Ms. Griffin, from the commissioners? I do. So, Ms. Griffin, could you discuss with us why these, why we have the restrictions and the need for slopes greater than thirty percent?
Yes, so anytime you build on slopes, we want to make sure that we are meeting our stormwater management requirements and also meeting our building requirements. Anytime that you're building on a slope, it can be dangerous as far as the building material that is used, so we must make sure that we have a correct impact. We also make, have to make sure that we are not disturbing any wildlife. Slops usually are in resource protection areas, and so we have to make sure that that is not the case, also resource management areas. So it's really to ensure that we are not having an adverse impact on the environment.
And if I heard you correctly, a stormwater mitigation plan has been submitted and it's under staff review?
A stormwater mitigation plan at this point has not been submitted.
But it will be prior to council?
Yes, we are requiring that a stormwater mitigation plan is provided prior to council seeing this particular case.
Okay, and this particular parcel, you indicated that the pool was not a master plan to be built on, and was this particular parcel to be used as residential in that original?
The original master plan was done, like I said, ten years ago. It did not designate specifically where the residential and commercial uses can go, and that's why last year, we wanted the property owners to provide us an updated plan, and that's what you saw just a few minutes ago. So the original that I've seen did not have that information on it.
Thank you.
I had a quick question. What are the benefits, or why should we not wait for the stormwater review?
Well, that is actually a part of the requirement of the zoning ordinance. Prior to approving any special use permit for slope waiver, you have to have a mitigation plan in place, and that is what the zoning ordinance requires.
So why, so that'll come before council approves it?
Yes.
Is there any reason why we shouldn't wait for that to be submitted before we approve?
That you could, if you would like. However, my thought is staff is going to make sure that that happens. It's a conditional approval that you all can put on this, and so it still can move forward with that conditional approval.
Other commission questions? Hey, I'll open the public forum. Was anyone from the developer here to?
Yes, Ms. Tracy is here.
Good afternoon, I'm Tracy Dowling. I'm the Assistant Director for Real Estate Services for Riverside Health System. I'm here representing Quarter Path and Riverside today. Although Riverside is listed as the applicant, or listed because Quarter Path is still the owner of this, of this parcel, it will be Kerbor Development who will do the development on this parcel, and we've been working very closely with them and their civil engineering firm, Timmons Group, which we have Mark Richardson here today if you have any technical questions regarding the slopes and the site plan as it sits today. One of your questions related to why do you go to the steep slopes approval before you actually submit and approve the site plan? The site plan is already somewhat under review right now, but to know that we already have the approval for the steep slopes, the small impacts on the steep slopes that this developer wishes to make, gives them the go-ahead to go ahead and keep moving forward with the site plan that they have, which takes a lot of work, a lot of review. We really appreciate the staff's very diligent review on this site plan as well as the Greenwood Site Plan that will be coming to you all next month. We think that they've done an extremely thorough job. We've worked very closely with them, along with Timmons Group, the civil engineering firm. So, again, we would just request that you do approve this impact for the steep slopes.
Thank you. I have one speaker card for this application. Elizabeth Keller would like to come up and.
Actually, the letter I received, I thought we were going to be talking about what you call parcel B twelve, but I'd like to go ahead and give you my comments. I am Elizabeth Keller. I'm the owner of thirty-nine forty-two Prospect Street, purchased from H.H. Hunt, twenty eighteen. I am pleased with my home and the immediate neighborhood. My concerns and those of many of my neighbors are for the future of Quarter Path development and the probity of Riverside's development department. Regarding the special use permit, we were told in twenty twenty-one, the reason a community center pool could not be built in the original site was the slope was too great. Why is that slope now appropriate for residential units? How will traffic enter and exit? What's the impact on increased traffic on Eastview? What happens when a once-in-fifty-years hurricane or earthquake hits Williamsburg with flooding and mudslides? Just look to California. Regarding open space, with the recent addition of condominiums to our neighborhood, there has been no designated open space. Several of the condo buildings have limited access and parking and are crammed into limited space. What does Riverside plan? And gentlemen and lady, if you haven't seen the condo construction site recently, I encourage you to visit it. Regarding rental units, we have asked repeatedly for a cap on rental units and have been ignored. By our count, approximately twenty-five percent of the existing townhomes are rental units. The CCNRs call for at least six-month leases with tenants, which provision is not applicable to the declarant, which of course is Riverside. What is to prevent these condominiums from becoming student housing with month-to-month agreements? With four students to a condo, where will the vehicles park? Regarding communications with the developer, we were told in two thousand and eighteen by the sales office that after one hundred homes were sold, there would be owner representation on the homeowners' board. This won't happen because the development period is indefinite. When I first read this in the Articles of Incorporation, I assumed the development period would end after a year or two. We are now told we will never have representation. Also, after one hundred units sold, community center and pool were rebuilt, that took four years to complete. The developer called for an annual homeowners' meeting to be, excuse me, held last December, December twentieth, knowing that many owners would be out of town. The mood of the developer's board was decidedly unfriendly and at times hostile. It is clear we have no voice in the governing of our community. Our repeated questions and complaints go unanswered and ignored. I raise this here because the cohesiveness of our community is breaking down with the departure of some of our original buyers who feel they were deceived. I realize you do not represent Riverside, but I raise these last issues because if owners continue to leave the development and/or the condos become student housing, the word will spread in the realtor community, and our properties will decline, as will the developer's ability to sell new units. I request, respectfully request, that the Planning Commission postpone consideration of the application until these questions can be adequately answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. I don't have any other speaker cards, but if anyone else would like to come and address the commission about this application, now would be the time to do that. Not seeing a stamp, oh, yes, sir. Please come on up.
Good afternoon.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Edward Berg. I own a property on Parkway Drive, and I apologize that I'm not prepared because, you know, I just came to this meeting for another matter, but I was curious about the question of man-made slopes, whether they were created by cutting or filling, and if the potential erodibility of those man-made slopes had been evaluated as part of the mitigation plan.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else like to address the commission? Okay, not seeing any hands. I will close the open forum at this point and ask for comments from the commission. I'd like to ask Ms. Griffin about that question. Would that be part of the stormwater mitigation review, is the suitability of the man-made slopes and stability?
Yes, it would be, but you do have engineers here now from Timmons that may be able to answer that question.
Good afternoon, I am Mark Richardson. I represent Timmons Group. We're at twenty-nine oh-one South Lynn Haven in Virginia Beach. The man-made slopes that we're talking about was part of the Battery Boulevard construction, so right now, those slopes are in cut, but they do kind of vary depending on where you go.
And I think the question was whether they would be suitable for?
Yes, yes, they do meet V dot standards. So a three-to-one slope, which is a V dot standard, is over thirty percent.
Sir, while you're up there, can I ask a question? And this would help clarify why that the slopes are suitable for residential housing versus the construction of a pool and amenity center?
Well, the location in question was B twelve, so the slopes in B twelve are much different. We have, the units that are fronting the road actually have drive-out garages, so it's two-story to be able to step down for the grade, and then as you go beyond that, they continue. And then as you go beyond that, they continue to step down as you go through units. When you have a community center, we have two stories because of the step-down and you add cost on to for elevators and other things and parking. And then not to mention just the flat nature of a large pool. You know, it's not very conducive. We tried multiple times to get it to fit on that site.
The grade allows for multifamily housing a lot easier to build and more attractive, probably?
Absolutely, than a big building like that with a pool.
Thank you.
Questions? All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
It seems that our review for the special use permit is relatively narrow. And appreciate Ms. Keller's concerns. Some of the, many of these issues are outside the scope of this particular proceeding. And I haven't heard anything. And I believe that staff has addressed the issues that are before us on this particular application.
Thank you. Let me ask Ms. Griffin, in the mitigation, the stormwater manager, what's the opportunity for the residents and other members of the public to be informed about that, about the status of that as it proceeds? Because I think that's really critical to what we're actually voting on today, which is, Mr. Tarly has said, is very, very limited.
So all of our plans, of course, are available for a public review. The information, we can upload the information as it comes in. The mitigation plan, still that is online and people can look at that. Prior to the, it's being submitted to the city council, it will go through a public session where people can look online and see the mitigation plan for, because all documents will be uploaded for the city council meeting. And that is done at least two weeks prior to the city council meeting. And then, of course, it will be a public hearing, another public hearing for this particular site plan with the mitigation plan attached to that.
So the residents should monitor the?
Yes, they can monitor the website. And they will also receive a letter prior to the city council meeting as an adjacent property owner, asking for their input at the city council meeting.
So they'll get actual notice of that city council meeting?
Yes.
They'll have the opportunity to bring any concerns up at that point?
Yes.
Good, thank you. As Mr. Tarly has said, so many of Mrs. Keller's comments are very important. But we have a very, very limited application here that we're, you know, we're not able to address those, the majority of those concerns. Having said that, are there other comments before we have a motion? Is there a motion then to approve PCR 22-019 with the staff recommendations, which include the mitigation and stormwater work?
So moved?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Tarly?
Aye.
Mr. Boswell?
Aye.
Mr. Granger?
No.
Mr. Sokolowski?
No.
Ms. Lebel?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We move on to PCR 22-020. Ms. Griffin again.
Yes, this is a request for an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map and a request for rezoning. This is submitted by the city. We are moving forward with the building of our new police station. And that will be done in phases. And the first phase is to expand our public works yard to make room for the parking area for the police station. Because of that, we want to make sure that what we ask developers to do, we are willing to do the same. And so this property here is 615 Lafayette Street. It's identified as parcel number 2913.739.796. And the current land use is low-density, single-family detached. It allows for public uses, but that public use must receive a special use permit. We feel that instead of going through a special use permit process, the city should amend the Comprehensive Plan to require the property to be public and semi-public land use and then to rezone the area from RS2, which is our single-family dwelling district, to the downtown business district, B1, because this is a zoning district that all other public uses have, such as the library and the police station currently, and also the municipal building are all B1. This is the property in question where the star is. It's approximately 0.893 acres. The property is now vacant. Again, it's at the intersection of Lafayette and Harrison Avenue, Zone RS1, and the city is recommending a rezoning to B1. The Comprehensive Plan designation, as I stated before, is low-density, single-family detached residential. It allows up to three dwelling units. This, it requires and allows for single-family detached homes to be built there. And if a public use wanted to go there, a special use permit would be required. We're requesting an amendment of the land use designation to public and semi-public. And this allows for churches, nursing homes, cemeteries, and other public uses to be allowed by right. Again, this just goes over the information I just provided. This is a zoning map. The red area or burgundy area is B1. The yellow area is the RS1. Staff is recommending approval of this request. This request is twofold. One, it is the amendment of the Comprehensive Plan Use Designation and a rezoning from RS1 to B1. Any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Griffin?
Currently, if we don't rezone it, you would have to pursue a special use permit to develop this property?
Yes.
Purpose?
Yes. Yes.
There a follow-up, Mr. Hamilton? I can't tell. Okay. Other, I wasn't sure if you were thinking or?
I was smiling.
Okay, good to know. Okay, other questions from Ms. Griffin on this application? Okay, we'll open the public forum and give anyone the opportunity to come and speak to us about PCR 22-20. And I don't see any takers on that, so I'll close the, I'll close the public forum. Discussion, comments, or a motion to approve 22-020 as submitted?
So moved?
Seconded.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Cale?
Aye.
Mr. Tarly?
Aye.
Mr. Boswell?
Aye.
Mr. Granger?
Aye.
Mr. Sokolowski?
Aye.
Ms. Lebel?
Aye.
Okay, and that brings us to PCR 23-001, our first of the year. The ARB Guidelines Update, which I know everybody is eager about. Ms. Griffin?
Yes, today I wanted to give you an overview of the update process and also review the major revisions in the Guidelines Book. Here with me also are the members of the Architectural Review Board. We have our chairman, our vice chairman, and all the members are here. Believe everyone, all but one are here today. And they are on standby and they know that you may call on them to ask some questions. So don't be shy to do that. Just a little bit of history, 1946, the city first adopted the Preservation Ordinance. This is special to America, to Virginia. And 1958, the city adopts a Comprehensive Architectural Review Ordinance. This is the first Architectural Review Board. And this was established by the Board of Architectural Consultants. This was actually the name of the review board instead of the ARB. In 1991, the city brings the ordinance into compliance with state code requirements. Prior to that, all properties within the city were under the ARB or the Board of Architectural Consultants purview. We are a trailblazer. The city of Williamsburg is among the first three localities in Virginia to adopt a comprehensive architectural review ordinance. Why, why do we do this? The Design Review Guidelines were created to enhance the quality of life for all by preserving the character and desirable aesthetic features of the city, ensuring that new development is compatible. And this is an excerpt exactly from our Comprehensive Plan. And how do we do this? In 1989, the Comprehensive Plan and in 1991, the zoning ordinance recommended the creation of the ARB Guidelines. Specific character defining features of the city were identified in the 1989 Comprehensive Plan. And then in 1992, Frazier and Associates, an architectural firm, came and did architectural surveys of certain properties within the city. In 2013, the Comprehensive Plan recommended that properties that were not surveyed in 1992, but were now older than 50 years old, would also come and have a survey completed. This just gives you an overview of all of the meetings and work sessions that the staff and the ARB held. You'll see that there was a break in those sessions from April 2020 to August 2020. And this was due to the COVID pandemic. However, soon after, in September, the ARB started once again with meetings. And these meetings were held virtually. Excuse me. The list goes on of meetings that were held. We're now at the stage where the Planning Commission is reviewing the Guidelines and holding a public hearing. Prior to this, in October of last year, there was a joint work session held with the city council. The ARB and staff went over the major findings. And the, it's going to be similar to what I show you today. And then December 12th, the Architecture Review Board held, excuse me, a public hearing and two workshops. Those workshops were held in this building. The first workshop were with residents who were in the AP1, excuse me, in AP2 districts. And then the second workshop, same identical workshop, was held with the residents that owned property in the AP3 and the CP districts. And right after, we had a public hearing. So for those who are not familiar, this is a map of the AP and the CP districts. The gold shows AP1. The, I'm going to call it burnt orange, shows AP2. The maroon or fuchsia is AP3. And then the CP Corridor Protection District is the green area. Of course, the AP1 Guidelines are homes that are in the center of the city, around the CW historic area. And so the guidelines are more stringent in the AP1 district. And as you move out in the periphery of the city, the guidelines do loosen. One thing that's new in this, in the Guidelines, is this definition of period of significance. And this is defined as a length of time when a property was associated with important events, activities, persons, or attain the characteristics that qualify it for National Register listing. The period of significance usually begins with a date when significant activities or events began, given the property's historic significance. This is often a date of construction. So what makes the Guidelines different from previous Guidelines is that every neighborhood in the city is given a period of significance. And that period of significance begins with the date of construction of the first home. And then it ends soon after the date of construction of the last home, of the majority of the last homes in that particular neighborhood. And that's important because of the next slide. Contributing and non-contributing structures. These are not made up concepts, but these are concepts that are familiar to the historic preservation world. And a contributing structure, this term refers to a building, site, a structure, or object that adds to historical associations, architectural qualities, or archaeological values, to which a property is significant. It's significant because of the period of significance, which we just talked about, and if it independently meets the National Register criteria. So within that period of significance of a neighborhood, you can have a structure that is contributing or a structure that is non-contributing. And this is significant because it then lays out the guidelines that will be for a particular structure. If your structure is contributing, then you probably have more stringent guidelines than if it is non-contributing because of your period of significance. So for example, if my period of significance is between 1920 and 1942, but my house was constructed in 1965, I am probably a non-contributing structure. Also, if there are certain features that were removed from that building, such as windows or doors or the materials that were used predominantly during that time period of the architecture of the home, if those were removed, then that building is probably not going to be a contributing structure within that neighborhood. This gives you an example of an excerpt from the new or proposed guidelines. This is chapter four. Chapter four is the neighborhoods section. This is Chandler Court. This gives a description. And every neighborhood within the AP and CP districts have descriptions. This gives a description of the subdivision. It gives you a history of the subdivision. And it provides you with a period of significance. Excuse me. The period of significance here, as you can see, is from 1918 to 1940. Another example is Braxton Court. The Braxton Court neighborhood, it gives you the period of significance. It talks about when it was platted. It tells you why this neighborhood was platted. It gives you a few pictures. It also tells you if the neighborhood is eligible for the National Register or if it is on the National Register of Historic Places. Here, the next two slides just gives you an overview. And this is not in the Guidelines Book, but it just helps you with the narrative of contributing and non-contributing and the register and not being on the register. Here you have Chandler Court, College Terrace, down into Indian Springs neighborhood. It actually gives you a count of how many structures are in the total neighborhood, how many are contributing, and how many are non-contributing. Same thing here. And what we did is we wanted to go through and to take a look at the main issues that came out of discussions with the Planning Commission, with city council, and with citizens prior to the guideline book coming, you know, and people looking at the Guidelines Book and the ARB making some changes. And the opportunity here was people felt like the guideline books should be different for structures within a fairly designated historic area and those in an ARB-designated historic district. And people requested flexibility in the material choice. And of course, it didn't express non-contributing, contributing, but this was the way to take care of that concern. And the proposed design guidelines, I won't read through those, but this is what is now going to take place with the new guidelines once we implement the contributing and non-contributing structures. So in chapter four, what you will find, if you own a home in a neighborhood in the AP or CP district, in chapter four, you will find a description of your neighborhood, as you just saw. Behind that description is a table of every address in that neighborhood. It gives you the name of the home. It gives you the date in which the home was constructed. It tells you if every structure on the property is contributing or non-contributing. And that includes the main building and any outbuildings that are on the property. It also tells you if the property is in a National Register or eligible for the National Register or if the property is on the state register. And I know that's a lot, and I'm trying to talk slow, but I talk fast. So I apologize. An important thing here is that an applicant can appeal their designation. So if you are a property owner and your home is designated as non-contributing, you have the ability, if you don't have a archaeological, architectural survey. Now, there are some properties in the city, a lot of properties in the city, that are on the National Register. If your property is on the National or State Register, then this does not apply to you, okay? Because the state and the federal government has said that your building is contributing or non-contributing. The contributing and non-contributing phraseology is actually in and on the state and national registers, okay? But there are some buildings, as I alluded to before, that don't have this survey. Those buildings can appeal their designation. That designation was made by previous staff that went and reviewed through window surveys all of the homes that were not on a National or State Register. They looked at the age of the home and also any architectural elements that may have been removed, like I spoke about before, doors, windows, that would make that home non-contributing. If there is someone who says, I believe my home is contributing, they can appeal their designation to the ARB. they can appeal their designation to the ARB. If you say, "I think my home is non-contributing," and you've listed as contributing, you can appeal that designation with the ARB. Also, regardless of status, contributing or non-contributing, additions can use all materials approved for new construction. And that is significant. That is not the case in the current design guidelines. Also significant, a non-contributing structure can have any window material allowed for new construction in districts outside of the AP one. This just gives an overview of what I discussed before. I apologize for the dates here. Didn't see that before. So I won't go over that. Period of significance, I've touched on that already. This just gives you a diagram of that. Remember, I talked about the removal or alterations to architectural significant features, doors, windows, and siding. We talked about the year the subdivision plat was recorded. This, when we first were going through this exercise, my question was, well, in the AP one, you know, this sounds good for AP two and AP three and CP, but would there really be any structures in the AP one that were non-contributing? And the answer is yes. Excuse me. Here, this is just three examples of homes that are in the AP one that are non-contributing. Four two Scotland Street is contributing, and you have two oh nine Griffin, six oh five, and then two oh six South Boundary are non-contributing. This gives you examples of non-contributing structures only in the AP two district, and the same in the AP three. Materials, there's been a lot of discussion about materials, and the opportunity that the ARB had was to allow flexibility and material choice for contributing and non-contributing structures. People felt like the significance of the property should be considered when determining if substitute materials were appropriate or not. They wanted more flexibility in exterior and window materials, more modern materials, and consider the cost when requiring materials. Again, the idea of this contributing and non-contributing seemed to be the answer for that. The guidelines allow properties listed as non-contributing to use materials approved for new construction, including wood, brick, cement, cementituate siding, wood composite, and stucco. Stucco is new. This is a material that is not allowed currently in the design guidelines. Again, we talked about regardless of status, additions can use all materials approved for new construction. That is also significant. The new guidelines allow solid synthetic material as approved fenced material. That is new. That is not the case currently in the guidelines. Windows. When we had our public hearing on December the twelfth, as you can, as you know, didn't have a lot of people for the public hearing. We actually had more people for the workshop. But those who decided to stay spoke about windows. And one of the things that they requested was a list of materials, alternative materials that were approved previously to be included in the guidelines. And the ARB members had no problem with staff providing a list of those materials, but were leery of putting them in the guidelines because materials can change. So if there is a property owner that has questions about a material that was used, an alternative material that was used for siding or for windows, we can compile that in the planning office and provide that to you, but they're not actually in the guidelines. Existing and contributing structures must utilize wood windows for restoration or replacement. Other window types can be replaced with windows allowed for new buildings or additions, and alternative window material is going to be allowed. Now, also in the guidelines, something that's new, in the executive summary, in bold letters, it talks about alternative materials, and the fact that the ARB is open to look at alternative materials, and alternative materials will be considered on a case-by-case basis. That's in the front, so when people, people won't feel shy about coming to the ARB for alternative materials, because they will take a look at those. Demolition, there was some concern about demolition in the AP two and AP three areas. Opportunities were to allow demolition of non-contributing structures with a clear process and criteria, and to consider the current state of the neighborhood when considering demolition. These are questions that are currently required now, that the applicant has to answer prior to a demolition. There was no need to change these. These will be the same questions that are asked for non-contributing structures. This talks about the period of significance. Is this particular structure on the National Register? The value of the building, the effect the demolition will have on the neighborhood, the type and quality of the replacement, the comprehensive plan goals, the condition of the building, and then the economic feasibility of restoring the building. Colors. Colors, particularly in the, in the corridor commercial, corridor protection district, has been, there's been an opportunity for improvement. So color choices should be expanded or eliminated in certain commercial areas. You will see the ideas here varied. Some people thought the color choices were just fine. And then there was question about logos for commercial. The ARB has added eleven additional paint colors for districts, the residential AP one, AP two, AP three districts, and the CP residential districts. The entire Colonial Williamsburg Benjamin Moore color palette can now be used for signs. Now, this is significant. Right now, the entire palette is not available, but the new guidelines would allow commercial businesses to use the entire Benjamin Moore color palette, Colonial Williamsburg Benjamin Moore color palette for signs. And also significant, in the corridor protection residential and commercial areas, the ARB will not focus so much on preservation, but on aesthetics. In this process, while this wasn't something that we looked to find in speaking with residents and also looking at some of our procedures, I feel that we can streamline and make our process more efficient. And we would do this by distributing process diagrams to tell people, this is where you start with this process, but these are the steps that you have to go through. So for windows, there will always be a site visit if, if a, if a property owner is asking to remove all windows. And that is something that is common around the Commonwealth for that particular request. Now, if that's something that someone knows when they start the process, it's a little bit easier to stomach than they find out when they come to the meeting. So we're going to have a diagram to show them all of the different steps along the way. We've been asked to host material exhibits to give outreach to real estate professionals. And in Virginia, real estate professionals don't have to disclose that a building is in a historic district. We would like to reach out to them, ask them to begin to tell their clients about the ARB districts. And then there is such thing as the CLG Certified Local Government. Because of the city of Williamsburg's importance in historic preservation, we are a CLG community, but we haven't been taking advantage of the CLG grants that are afforded to us. And those grants can be for various things, of updates, of plans, and training, and also to host some of the material exhibits that the residents have asked for. Excuse me. I talked about the citizen comments. There was someone there that praised the work of the ARB, so I wanted to make sure that I included that. And then others, there were two people there that talked about alternative window materials. Next steps. At our last meeting, at the ARB's last meeting last week, there was a question by Ms. Lebo about the corridor protection district. Specifically, the city was, had an inquiry about the demolition of three buildings in the CP residential district. It came to me through word of the city engineer, and what we found that these buildings are actually historically significant, but happen to be in the corridor protection district. Currently, the zoning ordinance does not require the architectural review of, for demolition in the CP district. And what we are now requesting is that that be added. And so our plan is to come back before you at your meeting in February to allow for the zoning ordinance to be amended, to require approval, at least review, of structures that want to be demolished in the CP district. The city council public hearing then would be moved to March ninth instead of their February meeting, because we believe that the approval of this particular guideline book and that zoning ordinance amendment needs to take place at the same time. So we're asking for you to, of course, hold a public hearing today, but we're asking that you would table any decision until you're able to hear the request of the zoning ordinance amendment to require a demolition to be approved by the ARB if it's in the CP district. Hopefully, that made sense. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, questions, thank you, Ms. Griffin. Questions for Ms. Griffin, or hardball questions for our friends on the ARB?
Just have a comment. That was an outstanding presentation.
Thank you.
It really funneled down the information, the essential information.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I agree, that was a lot of work, and I appreciate everybody's work putting it together. I do have a couple of questions. Will, I know people can, I want to say, appeal a designation, but how will somebody moving to the area have noticed that their home is designated, however it may or may not be designated? If, from a, from a real estate perspective, if it was in an HOA, there'd be a restrictive covenant and things like that recorded. So how would someone moving in to the area know, hey, my house is historically significant, and I can't make changes to it? Well, what's the notice process?
So there are several ways. We, meaning the planning staff, are actually working with our GIS administrator now and our real estate assessors, and we are adding that non-contributing and contributing phraseology to the property card. You won't see it now because it's in the update status. So if you had, I'm going to say three oh five Scotland Street, and that's contributing, you will, if you brought up three oh five on the property card through the city's property information system, it will say AP one contributing, or it'll say AP one non-contributing. That's one way. Currently, that is not in place. You can see that it's in the AP one district. You can see the zoning. You can see the name of the home. You can also see when it was built. But additionally, we would have contributing and non-contributing. At the meeting that we just had, the work session, what we did is we provided cards to everyone that attended, and we, we asked them if they wanted information, if they, to know what district they were in, and if they had an architectural survey. We did provide several people with that information. That information is readily available in our office. That is another reason that we want to reach out to the real estate world, so they can inform those who are looking for a home in the city to know if it's architect, archaea, architectural significant or in a historic area. And this is going to sound like I'm being, what's the word? I've been called a smart aleck, and I'm not trying to be a smart aleck. But I, I would think if someone is moving to Williamsburg, they're, in their mind, because of what we're known for, I would, I would hope that they would think that they may be in a historic district and call the office, or look it up on the property card.
Okay, that's very helpful. The other question might be a little too hypothetical. If, if someone has, let's say, a house with aluminum siding on it, and the aluminum siding is terrible, but they don't want to take off the aluminum siding because they'd have to go back to the original wood and bring that into place, is that still, my understanding is that's the situation as it is now. Do the changes alleviate that problem so that it's an encouragement for someone to do something other than the terrible aluminum siding or the great expense of going back to the original wood?
Is that a question for the chairman?
That's a question for the ARB.
I'm sure Mr. Spence can address that.
Yes, in answer to your question, depending on which AP zone we're talking about, I think if you're in AP one or AP two, that's still not an option. If you have, say, original wood siding on your structure, and you have aluminum siding, you want to replace it, we're going to be looking to replace that, or to either refurbish and restore the wood siding, or to replace it in kind. I think as you get into AP three and CP districts, we've got more flexibility. And if we, if it's determined that when you do remove the aluminum siding, and, and if there was wood siding, and it's in such bad condition that it can't be replaced, we'd still be looking for, for the wood siding. Again, in an AP one and AP two.
Okay. Thank you very much. What's, what's the appeal, the time for appealing? Is there, is there a time limit? Or can people that have maybe contributing structure, and maybe they go through the process and they don't like your, you know, don't like your, is there a timeframe there or not?
I'm not so sure the logistics of the, the appeal process has been fully vetted and brought out. But I'll let Ms. Griffin address that.
It hasn't. If we would follow the current zoning ordinance, if someone provides us an application, and it's, it's denied by the ARB, they cannot provide a similar request within a year's timeframe. But we haven't vetted that out, but that is what is in place now. A year seems kind of long for this particular, but just to give you an example, but we have not vetted what that process would look like at this point.
Okay, thank you. This, this other, this next question, also a little bit, a little bit cynical. Suppose a property is on the National Register, and somebody buys it and decides they don't want it to be on the National Register because of the restrictions imposed by this, by these guidelines. Is there a way to remove a structure from the historic, the National Register or the state, that state designation to get around this? Is there a way to do that, or is that?
That is not, that's not built into, to the guidelines as such right now.
Mr. McDay, Mr. McDay might know the answer to that. You're the expert on the National Register. Is, is, can, can somebody request that their property be removed? Or is, once it's there, it's there?
Generally, a property is only moved to that register if there has been some sort of deterioration to the, is, is ordered. In this process, because the level of detail of the examination may not be as, as great. Some of the properties are, there might be discussion there. But most properties are placed on the National Register without an authorized permission. So at some point, some are agreed with the process if it is listed on the National Register. Be listening to something, I felt, I have a whole lot of personal experience about. I believe there is a process. That may or may not, because the regulations and procedures through the Virginia Landmarks Register and the National Register of Historic Places are controlled by, by, by Park Services. And by, by Park Service Resources. The city's processes are something. There is a process where we, because something has happened to the property to render it less historically significant.
Okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate that response. I'm just trying to think about a way that somebody might try to do an end run around, around these, around these guidelines. What's the, what's the process for the city? And I think it's a great idea not to list all the materials, but what's, what's the process for that city, that city list be kept up to date? Our, our staff, of course, is overworked and underpaid as, as it is. So how are they going to get, if there's something new, is it approved by you, and then you notify them, or is that how that works?
Well, I think that's going to be an iterative process. I think the staff already has a list of some of the materials that we've considered and discussed. And at our meetings, when, on a case-by-case basis, we're presented with possible materials for us to consider. And in several cases, we've actually come to, come around to some materials based on their qualifications. But I think it's going to be a, working with the staff really on a, on a monthly basis, especially after each one of our, one of our meetings, to keep the, the materials list up to date. And also, we, we have established a list of, And also, we, we have established a list of people who can execute work that needs to be done on these historic buildings, because people are always asking, I can't find anybody to replace or to reproduce or to repair or restore a window or a door, or this and that. And we have developed a, a list of people that we do keep with the city if, if somebody were to inquire. Again, that's not something we can really publish or put into, into the guidelines, because we're not in the business of, of, of doing that, but as far as having that with the staff, I think that's, it's a good, good idea.
All right, thanks, sir. Other, other questions for Mr. Spence or, or members of the ARB? Well, we, we don't have, we'll, we'll have opportunity for that in a moment. This, this is still kind of the, the formal presentation piece, and then we'll, we'll open it to public forum in just a moment. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay, I have one speaker card, and we always go in order of speaker cards first, and then we'll call on everyone else. Mr. John Miller for the public forum.
Good afternoon. I'm John Miller from seven ten South Henry Street, and I wanted to bring something up that I didn't see addressed, and that is accommodating energy saving. There are many different things that people can do in other jurisdictions, but I don't think they're called, they're allowed in the current guidelines, such as photovoltaic panels. You obviously can't put them on the roof of a historic building. Can you put them on the ground near the historic building? That's a question that should be handled. In various parts of the world, solar thermal panels heat hot water. In the United States, thirty percent of all the electrical energy used by houses goes to heat cold water. That's an absurd waste. We ought to be getting in the business of encouraging people to put solar thermal panels on the roof, or somewhere else near. Windmills for generating electricity. We don't have any requirements other than saying, no, you can't have them. And the fourth thing I wanted to bring up is, instead of noisy and expensive electric compressors, can the city require large developments to use deep in the ground, very cold water recirculating, which is much more efficient and longer lasting? I think typical compressors last about ten years. They have to be replaced. Pumping systems go on for centuries. So those are the things that I wanted to bring up. I don't know whether you will be able to address them for future ARB guidelines or what, but I do think they do have to be addressed, both for the individual's pocketbook and for our place in helping save the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I apologize for mispronouncing your name. Okay, that's the only speaker card I have, but I think we have other folks who are interested who would like to, ma'am, would you like to come up to the podium, please? Remember to state your name and address, so the clerk can get you in the minutes.
Thank you. My name is Marlene Severson. I'm at two three four North Boundary Street. And I just wanted a little more clarification. I think a question Dr., or Mr. Granger asked was about replacing siding. If you had bad-looking aluminum, did you have to replace it with wood? And I'm, I'm thinking that would be for a contributory structure. Would a non-contributory structure also be required to replace that with wood, or could you use another substitute product that looked similar?
So this is the public forum where you tell us what you think. The staff would, staff can answer the questions like that offline, if you'd like to give them, you know, give them a call. And I'll, we'll ask Mr. Spence to, to address that, too, if that's, if you'd like us to. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Spence, would you care to just address that real quickly? Did you?
To answer that question?
I'm not too sure I understand what, what district are we talking about here? AP one, and you want to go from aluminum to wood, or? Non-contributing in AP one, okay? Well, as Scott, as Mr. Spence had, had mentioned earlier, it depends on, first off, what's underneath the siding? Is it wood, and is that something that can be restored?
Mr. Gross, Mr. Gross, I'm going to, I'm going to just cut you off there, because we're getting into the weeds. And that's something, that's something, when we're getting into specifics, that's something beyond the scope of this, of this meeting today, so I'll, I'll relieve you from that, and the, the question can be addressed with staff and with the ARB, because that's...
Yeah, so I guess the, the short answer is it all depends.
Yeah, the AR, the ARB is going to be the place to ask that question. Okay. Would anybody else like to address the, the, the planning commission on the application that's before us today?
Hi, I'm Ray Pierce, and I'm a property owner in Williamsburg. I live in Colonial Heritage. Very nice presentation, by the way, and I noticed that in AP one, AP two, you had a slide that designated the number of structures in that particular, in a particular area, as being contributing or non-contributing, or on the National Register. I would just appreciate if this is finalized, that we'd be able to see all of those structures named in the earlier ARB rules, or one of the, some of the first ones that was done. Also, I was wondering if in the corridor protection district, the structures have been identified similarly, and would they be included? Also, the, my last question. In the corridor protection district, you mentioned that you were going to propose possibly a demolition clause. Now, is that demolition clause including corridor protection residential, or is it including corridor protection commercial, where grandfathered residential properties are included?
Okay, thank you, sir. I'm sure staff will be able to answer those questions for you. Would anybody else like to address the commission on the application that's before us? Not seeing anyone else, I'm going to close the open forum. As Ms. Griffin requested, we're going to table this today so that the corridor protection district amendment can be included, and so that we vote on it all at one, in one package, so that it then goes to city council, all in one package. So is there a motion to table PCR twenty-three dash zero zero one?
I move that we table PCR twenty-three dash zero zero one.
Second.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Cale?
Aye.
Mr. Charlie?
Aye.
Mr. Boswell?
Aye.
Mr. Granger?
Aye.
Mr. Sokolowski?
Aye.
Ms. Lebel?
Aye.
All right, thank you. I'm, I'm sorry we had to table that, because I know how much work has gone into this. I was there for part of it. I saw, I saw how dedicated our ARB is, and how, how, how detail-oriented, and how concerned you are with, with, with keeping Williamsburg a wonderful place, and, and I, I congratulate you on this work, because I think this is a very good, this is a very good update, and I look forward to, to seeing the final, final, final version next month. We don't have site plans or subdivisions or unfinished business. Chair committee appointments, we're going to keep the same committees that we, that we currently have. If there are any issues with that, please let me know. We have our city council reports and the monthly reports. I'm going to dispense with the commissioner reports for today. On Wednesday of next week at four o'clock, we will be back here for, for our CIP work session. We didn't have any public comment about that today, but there will be a, a presentation, staff presentation about that, and we'll have our, our annual opportunity to, to make recommendations on the CIP. Are there any other comments, questions, discussion for the good of the cause? Okay, then we're adjourned. Thank you all.